One and welcome. I would now like to call the December 5th, 2023 Longmont City Council Organizational Meeting to order. The live stream of this meeting can be viewed at the city's YouTube channel, also at longmontpublicmedia.org/watch. You can also see it on Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Crystal, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
Here.
Council members Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
McCoy.
Present.
Martin.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak at Public Invited to Be Heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at Public Invited to Be Heard. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. It's an exciting meeting. I would like a motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor, I approve the minutes on November 28, 2023.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
So the minutes were approved by Councilor McCoy, seconded by Councilor Martin. Let's vote.
I wasn't able to log in.
That passes unanimously. We're now, Mayor and Council comments. Do we have any comments from council members? Councilor McCoy.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure to serve with Dr. Waters, and I wish him Godspeed.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, we'll go directly to the public invited to be heard. Remember, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address. The first one on the list is Leo Buuhaker.
Oh, thank you for correcting me. Yes, I wanted to congratulate you on reelection. It looks like you won.
I congratulate you on your most recent election.
Thank you.
It looks like that you won around the same margin as the defeated tax increase proposals, so there might be a relationship there. And I just want to say, everyone who voted against the three tax increases should, of course, pat themselves in the back and shake hands with their fellow voters. The solution, though, is not to raise taxes. The solution is to cut spending. And another way we should approach this is maybe to have more than one or two people who are on the City and Planet Commission who actually live in Longmont. There's several of these people who are on this commission who don't even live in the county or in the state, so that needs to be corrected. I can build a rec center for $2 million. I'll have plenty of treadmills, plenty of bikes. Cut me a check for $2 million, I'll start work. I'm building it tomorrow. Make it out to Leo J. Buuhaker. So this is the budget analysis made by your accounting firm. I call them punks and morons because there are discrepancies in the annual report. Okay? So this is a sum of the general government and public safety. It's four times what we spent on cultural recreation. And cultural recreation, what you guys want to do is raise taxes by $150 million and put it all in cultural recreation. What the taxpayers are saying is that, no, take $25 million from general government, $25 million from public safety, put it into culture and recreation. Now, the reason we don't have cultural recreation is that when you put all this money into cops, nobody wants to have culture or recreation in this town. Now, the other part of the report says that 75% of every dollar spent comes from taxes, comes from me, the taxpayers in this town. But look, public safety, you guys spent $56 million in public safety. Public safety generated $3 million in revenues. You know what the rate of investment on that amount of money is? It's so negative that any executive who saw this would have to scrap the entire company and start over. But for some reason, you guys think you can just spend money willy-nilly without any consequences, without any returns to the taxpayer. This is a lazy public safety employee staff. Okay, so you guys need to get more out of your workers and less out of the taxpayers. My last comment is on Kim Buck. Kim Buck has never been a Republican, and when the going gets tough, Kim Buck gets out. So what if Abraham Lincoln, right before the Civil War, had said, hey, I'm tired of this, I'm going to resign? Well, we'd all be slaves, right? Kim Buck is a loser. During his tenure, the federal deficit quadrupled. The Republican Party is in shambles.
Thank you, Leo. Don't forget your papers.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next last name I'm going to probably destroy, so I apologize in advance. Megan Sicaros.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. I would definitely love to see his information on the budget. I'm personally homeless. I do also think that we need to increase taxes, not decrease taxes, because it's contributing back to the community. And when I am able to work, once I resolve some legal stuff, contributing is always part of what we want to do, and we don't want to decrease, we want to increase that, especially with public safety. I appreciate the cop, the police officers here, they're very important. I do wish that, that on freeze nights, that maybe we could have, that's kind of what I'm up here to speak about a little bit, is on freeze nights, maybe having a place that we can go, not being rerouted to Loveland, not being rerouted to Hope Shelters. Hope, unfortunately, I feel kind of like there's a monopoly surrounding the shelters here in, well, with coordinated entry. That's a really big, a really big thing right now is to have this idea of coordinated entry, and part of that is, it's nationwide. But it's not sustainable because everybody has addictions. I myself do not have an addiction. I have some legal stuff, I'm working through identity theft and some other things. But, but I do think that when you're considering addictions, that they are attending to their body needs, and that that has to be attended to first, so we have to allow people to have that and allow them into the housing, and then be able to promote that, promote time for them to have, promote time for them to have their decompression time, that's what we can call it, and then be able to eventually work them back into working after their body needs have been met, so that that can fall away later. But regarding the homelessness, right now, I really just want to be able to speak on the fact that freeze nights are really important, and I was hoping that we could have city council open, maybe the police officers open it up if it's too cold, so that we can have a place to go if we don't have, if we don't have Hope Shelter. I myself don't. I've been rerouted to Boulder Shelter, but all of my, everything is here, there's free busing here. We have, and I think free busing should be free everywhere, but I also think that we should increase taxes to 50%. That is because, the reason for the increase is because we want to be able to provide basic necessities for everybody to be able to contribute. And so I know that that's an extreme, so logically, that wouldn't happen now, but 30, 40 years from now, hopefully, you know, there would be a 50% tax, you know, because then you would be able to provide for food, water, housing, transportation, communication, and healthcare, and then, you know, education. So that would cover everything, it wouldn't be limited. But going backwards, freeze nights. If we could just have some sort of, something, somewhere for us to go when it gets too cold, I would really appreciate that, because it worries me, I don't want to catch hypothermia. I do have some things, like, but, but when you get out, your feet get cold so much, so cold so quickly, you can get hypothermia, you can get different things. And so I'm trying to work on my legal concerns before I get into working. I am trying to do some day labor, but I guess when you're worried about your basic necessities, it's hard to focus on other things, because there aren't protections in the workforce for people that are low income when you're already at this level. So, sorry.
Megan, thank you for that. Would you mind giving your contact information to Carla?
Yes, ma'am.
And we can have someone work with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Crystal.
Oh.
Not Carla. Crystal.
Would you like me to wait, or right now?
No, right now would be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that. The next one on the list is Stan Toll.
Yeah, I crossed out, is somebody supposed to go before me? I crossed out, and then I read.
I see. I see what you did. Thank you. Lance Whitaker.
Mayor and council, my name is Lance Whitaker. I live at 1750 Collier Street. As you all know, I've been a citizen of Longmont for 45 years. And to Mr. Tim Waters, thank you for your service. It's been nice to know you. I hope to get to see you soon, very soon. As for my three minutes, today is sort of a long day. I've got a lot of things on my agenda. Today is National Ninja Day. Today is also National Trick Shot Day. So you can do your little ninja stunt with your trick shot, but don't be too overconfident, because it's also National Soil Day. So you may be visiting that while doing your trick shot. Today is also National Volunteer for Economic and Social Development Day, so I hope you be aware of that. Today is also National Crampus Day, for any of you bad children on council. Today is also Satcher Tort Day, which I'm not real sure what that is. I know what a tort is, but... And finally, it's also National Bathtub Party Day. So I don't know how that goes, but some of you may or may not want to participate in that. You all have a good day.
Thank you, Lance. Now Stan Toll.
My name is Stan Toll, 2001 Terry Street, Longmont. And what I have come up and talked to council about the need to become more woke in how they are approaching our traffic and transportation in this community. And woke is being educated and aware. And the reason I brought my friend's bike, you know, basically, I showed up to his place, and that's what I saw out front. Couldn't get hold of him right away, so there was a, amazingly, there wasn't any major injury here. But essentially, what I was going to say is that being, if we really have a good, educated, and aware program, similar to what you see, like, in the Netherlands and other places like that, we can avoid stuff like this. This is almost, does not really happen in a lot of other places that really become educated and aware, in other words, awoke, with how they are doing their transportation. Whenever there's an accident, you actually check out, not just whose fault it is, but what could have avoided that. And I did mention before, the community that got rid of their stoplights, and they put roundabouts and reduced their death rate. It's about the same size of Longmont by over 95%. And the same thing can be done with how we do our bicycles and how we do our community, and how we can make it a more livable and safe community by becoming, by really putting emphasis on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stan. Strider Binstone.
Thank, yeah, thank you. Strider Binstone, 951 West 17th. That is, was my bike, which the city helped me get after my first bike got stolen, and I've only had it, what, a month? I didn't, just about 1,000 miles on it, but the, the snow a week ago Friday night, and I got out, I was just going to test, and I saw the traffic of, of the street had been totally cleared. The plows did a great job. I'd never seen that before at that early. And so I figured, all right, I can go out to the middle, and, and all of, all five lanes were clear. But then my hat blew off, and so no traffic, so I decided I could turn around and retrieve my hat. And then I saw, when I was, then I slid out, and I was trying to get up, and I see a truck coming on to 17th from Gay Street, and he's coming 10 or 12 miles an hour, I'm obviously right in his sight. And then he gets, is close to you, and I see he has no intention of stopping. So I said, no, no! Bam! He hit me, and I think he, some people say he ran over my bike, some say he went around after he hit me. I don't know, because I lost four or five seconds. And I get up and I say, get the, get the license. Well, it snowed the night before, so of course, it was hit and run. And so that was, that's kind of what I'm dealing with. I mean, destroyed my e-bike that the city helped me get. But then, five days later, four days later, my mountain bike was stolen, and the city gave, did a Victims Assistance Fund or something like that. I'd never heard of it, and they, they helped finance me to, you know, get another bike or put it back together. So that's wonderful. I mean, what can people actually do? And hey, in a democracy, everybody counts, and isn't that great that we still have one? Let's hang on to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Strider. Seeing no one else on the list, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody else that would like to address council? Seeing none, I close Public Invited to Be Heard. Now we're going to go to the swearing-in of our newly-elected city council.
I want to test that these work first. Yes? Okay. Mayor and council, we will start with the ward elected official, newly-elected officials, then we'll go to council member-at-large, and we'll do mayor. Last, if I could first have, please, newly-elected council member, Ward 1, Diane Christ. And if you would check that, talk into that, let's make sure.
Hi, Dawn.
All right. Please raise your right hand.
Yes, ma'am.
And repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Diane Christ.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of council member, Ward 1.
Of council member, Ward 1.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability, and with God's blessing.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we need your honor. And then we have Suzie Hidalgo Ferring next. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes.
I, state your name.
I, Suzie Hidalgo Ferring.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of council member, Ward 3.
Of council member, Ward 3.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Again. I, state your name.
I, Sean McCoy.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And the charter and the ordinance of the city of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of council member-at-large.
Of council member-at-large.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Joan Peck.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
and have a meeting. So can I have a motion? Oh, Councilor Waters.
It's my pleasure.
It's my pleasure, my pleasure to move that this council adjourns, signee, I.
You are too happy about this. Councilor Waters made the motion to adjourn the meeting, and Councilor McCoy seconded that. Let's vote. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilor Waters. So we'll take a couple of minutes so that our new counselor, Councilwoman Christ, can get seated. Y'all set? Okay. All right. So I would like to call to order this new council of December the 5th, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmembers Christ.
Present.
Hidalgo-Ferring.
Here.
McCoy.
Present.
Martin.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at public invited to be heard will need to add his or name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at public invited to be heard, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. State your name and address. I'm gonna read the land acknowledgement for this new council. I think it's a great way to start. We acknowledge that Longmont sits on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Yoot, and other indigenous peoples. We honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that the first people have with this land. It is our commitment to face the injustices that happened when the land was taken, and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again. The organizational items are, the first thing we need to do is elect a mayor pro tem by secret ballots. We have a piece of paper at, at your seat, so.
Mayor, if I may, Dawn Quintana, City Clerk.
Sure.
I believe first you would entertain a nomination, and then the council would vote by secret ballot, and I will tally those votes for you.
Uh-huh. Do we have any nominations? Councilor McCoy?
I nominate myself.
Okay.
Can we nominate ourselves?
I assume we can. Counselor Martin?
I nominate Erin Rodriguez.
Counselor Yarborough?
I nominate Suzie Hidalgo-Ferring.
Very good.
So now we.
Now you each have paper ballots. If you would write your vote on the first paper, and I will collect those, and we will see if we have a winner. Looks like Councilmember Martin has a question. Just the last name is all that's needed.
I do. How is it a secret ballot when our initials are in the corner of the ballot?
That is only for me, so I can keep track that all seven have voted. It's just for me. Otherwise, I have no way of knowing that you didn't accidentally give me two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're a good question. Well, thank you, Harold.
Do you have your ballots?
I do not have ballots. If you would.
You do, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring those over to you with your sign.
Well, thank you.
If you just hold up your, if you're ready, then Harold knows who to collect. Thank you. Okay, Mayor and Council, you have three votes for Erin Rodriguez, three for Suzie Hidalgo-Ferring, and one for Sean McCoy. So we need to vote again. So ballot number two, unless you'd like to do something different, but otherwise, please vote again and hold up your paper. Thank you. Mayor and Council, you have a winner. You have four votes for Suzie Hidalgo-Ferring and three votes for Erin Rodriguez. So congratulations, Mayor Protemmy Hidalgo-Ferring.
Congratulations, Suzie.
All right.
I don't know if we should clap, or.
I'll leave that up to you.
So Dawn, you're gonna stay.
I'm here all night.
You're here all night for us. Fantastic. We're gonna do the city council meeting calendar for 2024.
And I will pull what you all have in your packet, the calendar that we prepared for you in the packet. We have prepared this calendar for February 2024 through January 2025 on the basis of what the meeting schedule, the council's been having most of 2023. So if there is an adjustment you would like to make, that is not included here, this is just to begin the discussion. So our questions, as we look through this yearly calendar, sorry, I can't speak, are would the council like to keep the pre-sessions that have been preceding the LHA Board of Commissioners meetings that have generally been on the third Tuesday of the month? So that's a question throughout, and you'll see that in red. And then also, we're looking for, when we get there, direction on when you'd like to set a council retreat and what that looks like, because that should also be set within your calendar. So my thought was we'd just go month by month, and you can let us know if there's an issue. I wanted to review January. January 2nd is canceled for the New Year holiday. January 9th is a regular session. So right away, January 16th would be a Board of Commissioners meeting. Would you like to keep the pre-session? If I can go all the way through January, that is a question, I don't know how you like to do, do you want to talk about pre-sessions first?
Yes, let's, let's talk to see if people actually want to continue to have the pre-sessions. There was some conversation about that last time. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I, I think that the pre-sessions had some benefit in the sense that we were able to report back on the board and commissions that we served on, and, and I think that it also had an opportunity for us to somewhat talk amongst ourselves in a, in an open way that you can't just get in a regular meeting. So I'm in support of that.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, I guess we'll keep them.
Okay. And I will assume as we go through that we will stick with the schedule of the third Tuesday at 6 o'clock. That, that will be, if, if we want to talk about that more as you look through, if you want to change something, let us know. That will be my assumption moving forward.
Okay.
So January 23rd, a regular session, and then you set an open forum for January 30th to get that open forum in early in the year. So January's set. Looking at February, so Charter requires two regular sessions, usually on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, so those are here on the 13th and 27th. The 6th would be a study session, the 20th would be your pre-session, and then Board of Commissioners. Are there any concerns with February, or anything looks funny? It's pretty vanilla.
Yeah, seeing no one in the queue, I think we're good.
Okay, March. March has a conference in it, so we have our two regular sessions there. My proposal, after looking at this, is a little bit different than what was in your packet. I think it would behoove Board of Commissioners to keep the third Tuesday for their rhythm. So my proposal, after reconsidering, was regular session on the 5th. We, we need direction on whether you'd like to cancel the 12th or hold that meeting because of the NLC Conference. That's the Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC, that a few council members typically attend.
Can we ask that question now? Who? Yeah, I'm gonna go.
So we will cancel.
Yes, cancel that.
That is four of you planning on attending. Okay. And then we will do the pre-session and Board of Commissioners then on the 19th, and a regular session on the 26th. Any concerns with the rest of March? Also noting that coffee with council is moved from its normal date in March because of the spring break holidays, so that's.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to April. You have five Tuesdays this month, so the possibility to drop a study session, if you like. You could hold the 2nd or the 30th, it's really up to you, otherwise the two regular sessions and your Board of Commissioners and pre-session meeting. I think Councilmember McCoy was.
Yes.
I was gonna move, hope that we would drop the, the 2nd of April. I have a conference I'm putting on for future business leaders, which entails students from St. Varian and Boulder Valley. And I, it's, I will be gone that day.
Um, let's see.
Hoping that we could.
Whoops, sorry.
Push it to the, if we're gonna have a study session, couldn't, could we keep?
Hold the 30th, keep the 30th and cancel the 2nd?
Yes.
Counselor Christ.
I was gonna suggest the same, so that works for me as well.
Counselor Martin?
Well, I was actually going to say, since a, a full seven panel is not necessary, that we keep both study sessions, because I continue to believe that we don't have enough. But if two council members are going to be absent on the 2nd, then I will withdraw that.
Okay. Okay, so we will cancel April 2nd and hold a study session on April 30th, and the rest looks normal.
Okay.
Okay. May, uh, May you have two options, depending on how you'd like those meetings to flow. You could do a study, a regular, a pre-session, and a Board of Commissioners, and then a regular, or you could, if you wanted to cancel after Memorial Day on the 28th, you could do a regular, move the pre-session up to the second Tuesday and hold your regular session and then cancel. So really, the question is, would you like the day after Memorial Day off or not? Cancel that meeting or not? How would you prefer to do that?
Any comments, or Counselor Martin?
I still like the idea of fitting an extra study session in somewhere. When I began on this council, we had two study sessions almost every month. So I'm gonna keep saying that, and apparently, I hope somebody will agree some month, that it would be beneficial for us to have a study session where we can catch up on things that are going on.
So you would be in favor of option A, keeping the study session, keeping the regular session after Memorial Day? Any other?
Are we good with that? Of, of keeping the schedule as is?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. It looks like we're gonna keep it.
So I'll fix this.
Okay, Counselor McCoy has a question?
I have a question. Were we, was there any time in here that we were gonna have a council retreat?
That's a great question. If you wanted to do that early in the year, we can go back and look at, do you have a month in mind while we're here early in the year?
Dawn, what, what time did we do it last year? Was it? It was late. I can't remember why, but it was.
I think it had to be rescheduled because of conflicts. One of the things that on the, in terms of the retreat, based on how we structured my evaluation process, is more than likely in January, I'm gonna schedule a time to meet with you all and kind of go over the operational component. And then I think we talked about that as part of the evaluation process, and then we would schedule the retreat after that.
So we're looking at February?
February, late January.
I'm scrolling back to February.
I have February.
I have February pulled up on the screen as well, if that's helpful.
So I'm slated January 9th for the operational overview, so anytime after the January 9th.
And I'll go back. There's January as well.
Counselor, let's see, Counselor Martin?
Thanks. I was just gonna suggest February 9th and 10th would be a good time. I, I think a month for the new council member to sort of settle in, but as early in February as possible, so that we have as much time as possible as a council to implement what vision we establish.
Any comments from Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I agree. I think February 9th is a good time to consider the 9th and 10th.
So we want a two-day retreat?
I think that's probably effective.
Very good, then we will enter a retreat for February 9th and 10th and add that to this calendar.
Okay. So we're at June?
We are at June. June would be a regular month, study session on the 4th, regular session the 11th. Your third Tuesday would be Board of Commissioners, pre-session and Board of Commissioners, and then a regular session. Any questions on June?
I do see, yeah, I do see Juneteenth and CML there, and Juneteenth has become, becoming a tradition.
Yes.
So.
And it is a city holiday, city offices are, most city offices are closed on the 19th, and it's also the CML Annual Conference, the 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st.
So, yeah, four days is a long one.
It's in Loveland, it's not Breckenridge, right.
Okay. Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, you may know this, or you may not, usually the 18th, the first night of CML is only the evening.
Yes.
So we could still have the LHA and just not register until the next morning, and we probably wouldn't miss much.
Right. I believe that's true. I believe they'll stick with their standard schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then let's leave it the way it is. That's what I think.
So Juneteenth, are we planning on having a? Okay. Oh, it will be, okay.
All right, so we will leave this as is.
Counselor McCoy?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, on the 29th, I'm wondering if I can just make sure that my, I'm, that's not my day for coffee with council. I plan on having, taking students to a national conference in Orlando.
Okay. We will follow up with.
Thank you.
Staff on that, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for the planning ahead, that's helpful. the planning ahead. That's helpful. July, of course, has five Tuesdays, has your 4th of July holiday. Am I going too fast? Should I back up? I'm sorry. Back to June.
Councilor Hildagel Ferring?
Thank you. As I heard Councilmember Yarborough mention that Juneteenth will happen on a Saturday. So I do see that we have board applicant interviews on the 15th. Are we looking to have Juneteenth city...
The following.
The following Saturday? So I wanted to make sure that if we didn't have to reschedule that.
Thank you. Good catch. Councilmember Yarborough, you indicated you were targeting the 22nd.
Councilor McCoy?
I was waiting for the next month.
Oh, okay. Hang in there.
All right, back to July. So we do have a question. This would be six months out from your January open forum, if you wanted to schedule a second open forum. And then you have five Tuesdays to work with. So did you want to cancel a meeting, put in a... Keep a study session and have an open forum in addition to the regular sessions and the Board of Commissioners? What would you like to do?
Mayor?
Yes?
I would propose that the 30th be our open forum, because I think this is a little too close to Independence Day. And I think that there'd be a lot of folks that maybe just find that they take that time off. And the whole goal of an open forum is to hear from the public, not to have them out on vacation. So I think this would be effective, more effective to have it on the 30th.
See heads nodding?
Yep. I think we keep it the way it is.
So open forum on the 30th. And on the 2nd, did you want to keep that as a study session or cancel that?
I think we should have a study session, but... That's a good time to have a study session.
It is a holiday week. That's why we ask.
So let's take a hand count. Those who want to cancel the 2nd. One, two, three, four. Okay. We're gonna cancel the 2nd.
Very good. Moving on to August. Study session, regular session, your pre-session and Board of Commissioners, and then a regular session. Any concerns with August?
Nothing to change.
Nothing to change. Cruising on to September, has a Labor Day week there. This is when budget season. So we normally would keep all of our meetings here. I did go out on a limb here, Harold, and you can chime in here. Study session on the 3rd, regular session on the 10th. Do a Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:00 as a pre-session and not hold a council pre-session to save you from having to hold a Board of Commissioners meeting on a Thursday or another day.
Okay.
And then a study session and regular session. If that's okay, and you think that'll work for Board of Commissioners?
So I'm sorry, I missed the day. Was it gonna be the 10th or the...
The 17th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Okay.
To keep, trying to keep that consistency on that 3rd Tuesday for Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep, looks good. I still see anyone in the queue.
All right. Moving on to October, five Tuesdays here. So that first study session we'll want to hold for budget, regular session, then your Board of Commissioners regular session. So the question this month is really, would you like to keep the 29th or cancel it?
I personally think that I want to adhere to Councilor Martin's demand that we have another study session.
So we will keep the 29th?
Okay.
Okay, very good. In November, typically, we cancel the Tuesday, which is Election Day. It's a presidential election. But we can hold a study session that day, up to you all. Regular session. And then with the holidays, the Thanksgiving holiday, traditionally, you cancel that meeting that week. So we shifted again the Board of Commissioners to a 6:00 as a pre-session, and then a regular session. So you get your two regular sessions in if you want to cancel Election Day. So really, that's a question. Would you like to cancel Election Day? Yes.
Yes.
This is the 100th year of the National League of Cities, and they're holding a conference in Tampa. I don't know if people... It's not... That's in November.
It is typically, they didn't have the dates out when we pulled this together. There was no information yet. Typically, it's the, I think, the 12th, that week of the Veterans Day?
Yeah.
13th, 14th.
13th, 14th. Yeah, I think that's the right.
I just think that we should put that on the calendar, and whether, if people, as we get closer to that, if something changes, we can discuss that.
Absolutely. Yep. And that's another one that I believe you can start. There's dinners the first night, but then the conference really begins in earnest the next day. So... Okay, so otherwise, we will leave this as is. Cancel Election Day, regular session, and a 6:00 PM Board of Commissioners, and a regular session on the 19th, and then cancel the 26th.
Yes.
For the holiday.
The 21st, the Board of Commissioners goes away?
Goes away. Yes, thank you. That was our alternate solution, but it didn't seem to work real well for you when we did this recently. So December, again, with the holidays, we tend to see fewer meetings here. So we propose, again, no pre-session, regular session, a Board of Commissioners, or a study session and a regular session. Or you could do a 6:00 PM Board of Commissioners and a study session, depending on how that is panning out. And then cancel for the Christmas week and for New Year's week. Those two would be what you normally have done in the past. So...
I think we should do on the 10th, a study, split it, study and Board of Commissioners. We're wrapping up the year here, and if there's anything we really need to know.
A 6:00 PM Board of Commissioners, so that they can get their business done.
And we may, I mean, in December, we may or may not need one in December.
Exactly.
Typically, November, that's the Board of Commission heavy, but it gives us the ability if we need it.
Okay. And then a study session?
Right.
Okay. And then just no pre-session in December.
Correct.
And then January 2025, we like to set through January, because it helps staff to schedule items over the holidays. So the proposal would be study session or open forum or cancel the January 7th meeting, and then a regular session, Board of Commissioners regular session. So the question really is, that first Tuesday in January 2025, is that the right time for an open forum or a study session? Or would you like to cancel that guy? You will have been off the two weeks prior. Might be difficult to gather people's attention that first week in January for an open forum. My suggestion would be a study session or cancel and do an open forum, maybe in February.
Or January. No, we can't do it.
Yeah, January 25 falls out differently.
Well, I was thinking of January 28th of...
2025?
The schedule doesn't work, I can see.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a short month. It doesn't give you the five Tuesdays, which is helpful.
Exactly.
We could flip the LHA Board of Commissioners meeting to the 7th, and do the open forum on the 21st.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Could do that. Okay.
Flipping January 7th, switching it with January 21st.
Okay. Perfect. Very good. So what we will do is clean up all these notes and put it back in your packet, just so you can bless it, see it one more time, and not have any surprises. And we can always amend the schedule as needed. So...
Yeah, we do that.
We do do that once in a while. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Anything else, Sandy, you need for retreat while we're talking? Okay. Okay. Very good. Then that is all we need for that item. And now you all, we will get those added to your calendars, so you can plan ahead. And we will get it added to city staff calendars, so staff can plan ahead. So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that.
And now we have the city, and the city council liaison appointment.
We do. And Crystal is handing out to you two ginormous spreadsheets. I asked you all to provide me your favorites, your prep, you know, what you really were interested in serving on in terms of city advisory boards and non-city advisory boards. The results of your comments are what are in front of you. This is just to be helpful, to get the conversation going. These really are your decisions for how you divvy out these appointments, and for how these are treated. So I just wanted to give you a platform. My thought would be, we go through, first, the city advisory boards, and, second, through the non-city. But I think, Mayor, you wanted to chat a little bit with council about this.
I did. We had had throughout the, last year, the conversation about, are we overloaded? Do we need to really be on liaisons for some of these boards? Do we want to eliminate some of them? So I would, if anybody has comments on that, I think now's a good time before we decide. Councilor McCoy?
Well, I had... Thank you, Mayor Peck. I'd never thought about not taking that. What, maybe what could be considered is, is the city staff member could alert people to a pressing issue or something like that that is coming. And then somebody, then you could, you'd have a contact person, a contact council member to go. I mean, is that something that would be a good alternative opposed to just taking it off the...
That sounds like a lot of responsibility for staff. Perhaps we can sign up for the board, and then decide, look at the agenda, and decide if you feel, as the liaison, that's one thought process. Councilor Crist?
I have a couple of comments about boards. I was, you know, recently the vice chair of the Transportation Advisory Board. And then our last meeting was canceled. I got to visit with Parks and Recreation. And I was amazed that they were talking about some of the same things we were talking about at Transportation Board. In other words, how to make the trails through the parks safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And I said, this is what Transportation talks about. It just seems like maybe there ought to be an opportunity for board members, or at least the, you know, chairs and vice chairs, to overlap, so that some of these topics are discussed, and not the wheel reinvented at a new meeting. And maybe there's just some way that there's a connection between a few boards. I'm not saying that all boards would want to overlap, but there's at least, you know, groups of three that maybe talk about the same things. And then some of the choices that I made, I'll just throw this in, have to do with my schedule at the beginning of the year between January and June. So I had to pick a lot of Mondays. But I would like more time throughout the year, as time allows, to visit other boards and see where my skillset would best be used, or, you know, what I would be interested in.
So those are good comments, actually. And I agree that they do overlap in some areas. However, do you think all of these boards need to have a liaison at them? And that's, that's kind of the question. Are we putting too much time on counselors, the workload? Are we getting anything out of being a liaison to the boards? And so...
Possibly might be helpful for liaisons to attend intermittently. I don't know if they have to be there at every meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
So let's stick with the schedule. And then maybe in a pre-session, we can decide whether the board you're on is worth going to every week, I mean, once, every month. And it could be a quarterly attendance. And I think that's something we can discuss after we've done it for a couple of months. Does that sound okay? All right, let's go with it.
Very good. Then you all have a sheet that has green on the top, says city advisory boards. We will start with that one. Your other sheet does not have green on the top. So if you're not seeing green, you're on the wrong sheet. So in some cases, where you all indicated your preferences, there was one person, it was their number one choice, and there was no competition. And I highlighted those in green, is that you might just go with those as an easy solution. You do not have to do that. You could still discuss and make decisions. In a couple places, we didn't ask for your ranking, so I think we'll just go one by one. Airport Advisory Board, Councilmember Martin, that was her number one choice. The recommendation is in green. Nobody was, nobody else was interested as their number one choice. Others were for their number two. So I guess, does that, is that okay with you all, that Councilmember Martin continue with Airport Advisory Board? Councilmember Martin says yes.
Does anyone have a problem? Or does anyone else want that?
As one of the number twos, I say, Councilmember Martin can have.
Very good.
Okay.
Art in Public Places was of interest, number one interest for Councilmember McCoy and Mayor Protem Idago Ferring. So...
You two figure it out.
You can duke it out. Is that what you said? I call it horse trading.
Horse trading is better. Yeah, we don't duke it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't know. Let me see. I am on the museum board, and so it does...
We can come back to that, if you want?
Yeah. You know, and I guess, too, if we're looking at evening it out, maybe that's one that we circle back to.
To circle back to? Okay.
To see if, you know...
Absolutely.
Even out the numbers.
We'll come back to AIPP. The Asset Forfeiture Committee, Councilmember Crist was the sole person interested in that one, so thank you. Longmont Public Media was not number one for anybody, but number two for McCoy and Rodriguez. So the question there would be, which horse are you trading?
I would be interested in doing Longmont Public Media if I did get Art in Public Places. I have no preference.
Okay.
I think if that's preferable for Councilmember McCoy, he could have.
Okay. We'll hold that as we work through. I've got it written down as a question mark. Golf Course Advisory Board, again, McCoy and Rodriguez had it as a secondary choice. Any preference there? Or anybody else interested would be the other question?
I've done it before. I have too. It's, yeah.
I don't mind doing it if it's literally around the corner from the...
And they also don't even really meet every month.
So my hearing Councilmember McCoy offer for that one? Okay. Historic Preservation Commission is one that actually doesn't work for quite a few people. And it wasn't a top choice for anybody in particular. So the question is, who would like to serve as a liaison to HPC?
I wouldn't mind doing that.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I don't see anybody trying to trade you a horse for that. So we'll keep going. Yeah, it doesn't work the time. Library Board had Councilmember Rodriguez and Mayor Protem Idago Ferring, as both interested as their number one choice.
I would like to continue with the Library Board. I feel like we're getting some good momentum.
That was easy. Thank you. So Mayor Protem Idago Ferring for Library. Housing and Human Services. Rodriguez and Yarborough had that as their number two choice. Rodriguez has a couple of his first choices. Yarborough has nothing yet, just yet. We'll get further there, but...
If you don't want it, I mean, you've been doing it, so...
I have that. If you, if you really want it, you can have it. I mean...
It was a second choice.
Nobody wanted it first off. My hearing Councilmember Yarborough wanting to keep that, or are you ready to relinquish?
Yes, on Thursdays, from 7 to 9. I mean, you can... I don't mind keeping it a horse, so...
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Technically, that works.
It does work.
The first choices that are... It's on the first choices that are highlighted.
Okay. So.
Who, who does that go to?
So if she doesn't want it, I'll take it.
I always want it, but I would definitely be like you.
Very good, then. We will put Rodriguez. Your name goes in that box. Longmont Youth Council, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Idago Ferring had that as her second choice. Nobody else was there as a contender, so.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to that. I guess I can, yeah, thank you. I don't want to shout. So the reason why I put it as my second choice is, so technically, school gets out for me at 3:50. So I'm already late coming into those meetings. And it is one that I don't need to be there both Tuesdays. So I've been coming once a month. And so I would be happy to continue. But, you know, they do work with me. I'll get there, you know, about 4:00, 4:00, 4:15. So, but I wanted to throw it out to other folks if it works better for their schedule.
Let me ask you, how does it work with what you're doing? Does it work well with this group, that you're only there once a month?
Yes. Because, well, they, it's a lot of, they're, they're working on projects.
Oh, that's right.
So it's not really a meeting. So even if, if it was one that maybe we don't need a liaison to, I would say. But it's also good for them. I mean, the last conversation we had, you know, I'm sharing with them the work we're doing on council. And they want to actually have something where we either go to them or they come to us to kind of do some kind of, very similar to like the internship. But so we can kind of train them and get them used to looking at public, public service and looking at office. So there's, there's opportunity. I always make opportunity for, for it to work, so.
Yeah. So it sounds like Mayor Protem Idago Ferring keeps youth council?
Sounds like she likes it.
I do.
Very good.
I'm having to rush, but, yeah, that's fine.
The Museum Advisory Board was next, and that was, Mayor Protem Idago Ferring's number one choice without any competition, so that's in green. The next one, Neighborhood Group Leaders Association, was Councilmember Rodriguez's number one choice without anybody else wanting that as their number one. So again, that's in green unless somebody else. I'm just gonna keep going. Please stop me. Old Hire Fire and Old Hire Police both require the mayor. The additional person, Councilmember Crist was the sole person interested to sign herself up. So those are also in green, which gets us to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, second choice for McCoy and Rodriguez. So Rodriguez already has three, McCoy has two. There are others still, there are a few more boards to work through, but.
City.
City, but yeah, we're talking about, yeah, just the divvying up of the city boards.
I had done Parks and Rec before. I could do that again. I've also done a Ford.
Up to, up to you.
I don't know. Second one, I don't see. Let's see. Let's see what I. I guess it's okay for me. I mean, I like Parks.
Have McCoy do Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
I can take it, too. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'll take it. There's not any others.
It's up to you.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I'll do, I'll do Parks.
Councilmember McCoy, are you saying that you want to do Parks and Rec Advisory Board? Is that okay with you, Ken?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is planning and zoning, and you are serving there already, and that was your number one and no competition, so that's in green.
No.
Senior Citizen Advisory Board was, was not number one, but it was Councilmember Martin's number two, and she was the only one. So I was thinking that would be a logical solution, Councilmember Martin. Very good. And then sustainability was Councilmember Martin, the only contender there for her number one.
Why do you guys still want power seats?
We are down to the last two, and then we'll come back to Art in Public Places. Transportation Advisory Board had three people interested as their number one choice. Yarborough, Crist, and Rodriguez. Rodriguez, you already have three. Crist already has three, and Yarborough does not have three. Yarborough has, oh, you gave up Housing and Human Services. Yeah. You don't have any yet.
Whoa. I think I have, no, the Housing and Human Services? Oh, yeah, well, I want to keep Transportation because I'm running from the, that's the only one?
That's where we're at. Transportation.
Yeah, you know, Air Force.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Transportation, Rodriguez, Crist, and Yarborough. So you all get to.
I'm glad to not do that one.
You're glad to not do that one, okay?
I already got three.
Okay, I will take you off of that. So it's between Councilmember Yarborough and, and Crist.
I know you want it. You know I'm gonna drop in, so.
I'll still show up anyway, so.
But you can, you can keep it regularly.
Thank you very much. So I hear Councilmember Yarborough will keep TAB. And again, these are for the, the next two years, and then you will reassign again. So it'll be another opportunity in your tenure to serve on TAB. Last is Water Board. Martin and Crist both wanted that as their first choice. So Martin, you have three, and Crist has three. So either way.
Well, I don't know. I, I find it quite technical that you leave that all along, so I would really like to keep it for the last two years. I think I like that, so I'd like to drop in. Oh, yeah, no objection to that at all.
So Martin will, will keep Water Board, and Crist will visit her. Very good. Going back to AIPP.
I think, I think we, should I turn this on?
It's better for the audio on the live stream, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Are we giving that to Mayor Protem?
Yes, we are giving that to Mayor Protem.
Very good. That gets us through city advisory boards.
Do we need to take a break before we get on to the other boards that are not city?
We certainly can.
I just want to, I'm taking a, I know, but if somebody needs to break. Okay, it looks like we can continue.
All right. Thank you for hanging in there. So these are the non-city boards that you all sit on. These are boards external to the city organization. There are 20 of these. So again, three to four each. It doesn't always work out exactly. I did the same, used the same methodology where there was an obvious, it was a number one choice with no competition. I put that in green. So I'm just gonna run through those quickly. Councilmember McCoy was number one on Boulder County Resource Conservation Advisory Board as the voting. And then Longmont Economic Development Partnership, those are non-voting. Martin and Crist would be the, the two members there. They both put that as a number one choice.
Where are you?
I jumped ahead just to the green. I'm just popping through the green.
Oh.
You think the mayor has to do on an LEDP?
I think so.
The mayor is on the executive.
You have a mayor, and then you have a board member. I mean, I'm sorry, a council member.
Is that accurate? That's not in my notes. Joanie, do you know? Sorry, LEDP, the mayor must serve?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies, that was not in our notes. I will add that to our notes. So Mayor Peck will take one of those. Then the question becomes, who is the second person? Martin or Crist? Both had it as a number one choice.
Well, I kept Water Board. So if you want to do it, I had trouble with the second.
This one is noon to 1:30 on a Monday.
Yeah, which I could do.
You could do, okay. So Crist is gonna take that one? Keep that one? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for catching that, Harold. Those were all the greens, so let's go back to one by one. Consortium of Cities. So back to the top, page one, Boulder County Consortium of Cities. McCoy and Idago Ferring both have that as number one choice. And there is an alternate. So one could be the primary, the other could be the alternate. I just, which is which?
Okay.
Yes, I know what else we talked.
Pardon me?
I'm reading.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. Mayor Protem Idago Ferring and I discussed on the sidebar here, and we agreed that I would continue with the Boulder County Consortium of Cities. And that since my Golf Course Advisory Board is at around the same time as the Boulder County Resource Conservation Advisory Board, that she would do that one.
Okay, and.
Longmont Public Media.
Longmont Public Media, correct.
Sorry, so let me make sure I captured this. Boulder County Consortium of Cities.
McCoy.
McCoy will be the primary. The alternate is Idago Ferring.
Correct.
And then on Resource Conservation Advisory Board, that will also be Idago Ferring? Is that what you said secondly?
Yes.
Yes. So the green wasn't?
I can't, I can't do the green.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? Good horse trading, right there.
Yeah. Yes, and you know what? I wanted to open up the alternate if Councilmember Rodriguez does want to, to kind of get, you know, feel for the consortium of cities. I'd be happy to, to hand that over if he, if he wants that.
I mean, I'll take the alternate if that's.
Yeah.
Actually, this is really an important board, so we need to know what's going on there before the county brings it to us. So.
Okay, so Councilmember Rodriguez doing the alternate there. All right. Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee. And those are called virtual meetings, middle-of-the-day-ish. A lot of people are working, so the timeframe isn't working for a bunch of people. We don't have anybody in the number one or number two choice. The staff alternate is Sandy Cedar. Is still, still gonna serve? Thank you. So Sandy would still do that?
I would.
It doesn't, it doesn't take a long time, and you, like, especially virtually.
Yes.
You, you take your votes. You can speak if you want to, but.
When does it usually meet? It says.
In the middle of the day.
What day?
10 to 2. Do you know the?
It's usually Fridays, I think, right?
Fridays, two or three times a year.
I could take, oh. I was gonna say, I could take it. You do have four, is all I'm.
What, on this?
No. No, but four meetings already. It's up to you, but.
They're, they're interesting. Definitely is, is your during the legislature.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So Councilmember Martin? Thank you. Commuting Solutions. Rodriguez served on this last time, but the timeframe again doesn't work. Mayor Peck is.
I'll take it.
And Phil Greenwald will continue to serve as the at-large member there. Dr. Cog is the next one.
Me.
And then there's a voting alternate. That was Rodriguez in the past. There's a spot there. McCoy and Idago Ferring both have that as a second choice, the alternate for Dr. Cog. Denver Regional Council of Governments, I'm sorry if I, that's an acronym.
And this goes from 6:30 to 8:30, sometimes 9:00 PM.
Is it virtual or in person?
It's in person.
It's in person.
Yeah, our list says virtual. I'm, I apologize, that might be leftover from COVID.
It used to be COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Many, it also conflicts with planning and zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I'd say yes, because I'll already be in Denver, but.
Right.
And I hardly ever miss that meeting. So.
So the alternate.
Well, no, I, I can be the alternate because I already be in Denver.
Oh, you'll be the, okay, you'll already be there, okay.
I'll be working in Denver, so that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so Rodriguez.
So if the mayor can't be there, I can be there.
Thank, thank you.
That works, okay. Then Downtown Development Authority, two people interested, Martin and Yarborough.
Oh, yeah, I will. You like it, right? You want to keep it, and you don't have very many, so you can still have it. Okay.
How kind of you.
I turned myself off, I'm sorry. Jim Golden will be the ex-officio staff person on DDA for you. LEDP, we just did. Multi, LMAC, Longmont Multicultural Action Committee. Councilmember Martin has that as her second choice, but nobody had it as a first choice, so it's open, up for grabs.
This is Mondays?
Mondays at noon.
Yeah.
Second Monday.
Do I sign up for something else on Monday?
Yes, LEDP. So you, you could not do it. Yes, at the same time.
Yeah, I can't do it.
Yeah. So.
I will do it. You know, it's.
Or Crist might work for your schedule as well, Mondays?
Well, I'm doing LEDP.
You're doing LEDP. Yes, that's right. Okay. And then Sister Cities, currently Councilmember Yarborough, not a number one choice for anybody, but a second choice for lots of you. McCoy, Rodriguez, Idago Ferring, and Yarborough. So Sister Cities is up for grabs.
I mean, I'll keep it. I don't know, everybody got a lot of stuff going on over there.
Is everybody okay with that? Yarborough keeping Sister Cities? Okay.
I'm putting your name right down right now.
Thank you.
We'll put a couple other spots, too.
The Metro. Yeah, let's just fill her in. The Metro Mayor's Caucus.
You're gonna go down the rest of the list.
Will be Mayor Peck. The North, Northern Colorado Highway 287 Corridor Coalition. This one, Phil did chime in and say that he could cover this. There's not a lot going on, he said. So if you didn't want to appoint, or nobody was that interested, he would be happy to cover this board for you and bring back information as needed. But you also have up for grabs. Crist indicated she can't do that, but nobody else indicated interest.
It's only six times a year.
When?
Yeah, I don't know when that is, though.
How does she know she can't do it?
Yeah, they call their meetings, yeah, yeah.
They what? I'm sorry, I missed that.
They call their meetings.
Oh, so we, we don't know.
I don't know the schedule, no.
I'll just tell Phil to let me know if it's on.
Phil, keep us in the loop.
Yes.
Take Phil up on his offer, okay?
Exactly.
Right, right.
Okay.
North Area Transportation Alliance Steering Committee.
I would love to do this.
And nobody indicated an interest, and there's no second interest either.
The problem is, they're at the same time as PRPA meetings.
They are, yes. Thursday mornings, yes.
And that's why I couldn't do it last time.
For Thursday.
It's really important, and it wasn't really attended this year. That's very much, was it?
I mean, if you're serious about what's on the next page, go through this one.
No, I'm taking PRPA.
Oh, I can do, if it's 7:30 in the morning, I can do, that's in, that's in Westminster?
It's in person. That's the problem.
Yeah.
I think I could still do it. I'll just go into work a little bit later, because I'll just leave Westminster going
into Boulder.
Okay.
North Ameri, North Area Transportation Alliance Steering Committee, towards the bottom of the second page.
And you know, they've been doing those virtually this past year, I think.
And Phil, Phil is an alternate on that one as well, and can help guide you or bring back information.
And I can tell you what to listen for.
Very good. So Yarborough it is.
Yay, Yarborough.
North I-25 Coalition had, Coalition, sorry, had Rodriguez and Chris as their number two choice.
Have they ever actually called a meeting?
Didn't you, weren't you on that one time?
I was on that, yeah, no, they.
I don't know this answer. Did they not meet last year?
I guess that would be a meeting.
When I, they would meet every month. It was virtual, and then we went in person before I stopped.
No? Are you interested if we can get you connected in?
Yeah.
Or Councilmember Chris?
I don't know. Well, I don't work anywhere near there, so. I'm probably more convenient for you.
Okay. Councilmember Chris for North I-25 Coalition, we're in the home stretch. Last page, Northwest Rail Corridor Governments Committee. Called meetings, typically they meet quarterly. Is this one, another one that didn't meet? You didn't hear anything?
I've never got anything about it.
No one was interested first or second choice?
I'll take it, if, I'll take it. We'll see what happens.
Okay. And then Platt River Power traditionally has always been the mayor as, as the person serving, and then has traditionally been the director of LPC. And I believe, Mayor, you said that you would already.
Yep.
Taken up that choice. You can always drop in, Councilmember Martin?
I always do.
You always do, okay.
Not me.
You sure?
Yeah.
On to the next.
And Hornbacher, keep. David Hornbacher would still be your second, your staff person, your staff appointee, just confirming.
You better check, see if he wants it.
Yeah, and that was decided by council earlier.
You're right.
Okay. Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, that's mayor, for mayor, so Count, Mayor Peck would be there. The last two, Visit Longmont had Rodriguez and Chris both as their number one.
Actually, I'm also in the cannot-do-it list on that.
Oh. Oh, you are. There's two of you. Hmm, very strange.
No, I definitely can't make.
You, it's during the day, okay? So that would become Councilmember Chris. And Wendy Gap had nobody as a number one, but Councilmember Martin as her second choice. And you have served there already before. You did it. Very good. So we will clean this up, send it back out to you all so you can see it in the clean version. Double-check the calendars, make sure there aren't conflicts for you. And then, when would you like to have these become effective? January? Or immediately?
Definitely, no, not, for me, not immediately.
January?
Good. Some of these are ongoing, if you've, if you've had them throughout the year, anyway.
And many are canceled in December. There's not many board meetings in December, okay? Very good.
Dawn, thank you so much.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Yay, good job. Good job. So now we're at public invited to be heard. And I see only one person signed up, Strider Binstone. And I think you know the drill. Can you turn on the mic?
Just push button, it still turns red. That's fine, just keep pushing.
All right, cool.
There you go.
Yeah, Strider Binstone, 951 West 17th Avenue. Wow. We have seen democracy in action today. Elections, and then the people's representatives discussing how to get started in dealing with policy. And the concept in Western civilization, anyway, goes back to Athens, two and a half thousand years ago, and the, and the early Christians in the first century, and the Hanseatic League in Northern Europe, and the French, well, the English Glorious Revolution and Civil War, and the French and American revolutions. And during that time, there was a concept of what people would want to do with the commonwealth, the common wealth. And all kinds of struggles about how and what to do with it. Prison reform, women, children shouldn't have to work 17 hours a day in the lint mills and die of tuberculosis because there was no health service, all of that. And we've done good and bad with it for many decades. I, I've spent 60, the last 60 years of my life fighting for the right to have a democracy, which is now being radically threatened. And with some years off for running 100-mile races when I was burned out. But the, the point is that we are under severe threat right now, whether we will survive as a country and as a democracy, weak as it may be. And just last night, Rachel Madow and Liz Cheney had a discussion. People with completely opposite viewpoints, but both believed in democracy. And it's, may or may not survive. The best book I know of, of six or eight major books written about how Hitler took power, Hitler by Volker Alrich, it's a thousand pages, and I'm a slow reader, so it took me a long time. But all of this has to do with why I'm not allowed to, to have a real job. I've done heavy labor all my life, which is why my body's broken down. But let's, you know, keep the flag flying and believe in what we're here for, and don't let it be destroyed by people who have ulterior motives. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. We're at mayor and council comments. Do councilors have any comments? Oh, Stan, I'm sorry, you weren't on the list.
I, it's confusing.
It's confusing.
No instructions on that, if you should sign up for both or not. I wanted to greet the new council members and congratulate them for, and they're probably going to be going, oh my God, what, why did I get all involved in this? I got no more life anymore. But anyway, 2000 Terry, Longmont, Colorado, stand tall. And what I was going to just briefly talk to is like, you know, a while back, I saw, I think it was a pizza place over North Main, you had a police officer rousting a homeless person that had laid down besides this pizza place, evidently homeless. Now, this is an issue that really the council should really take up because here's a, here's a business. What we always used to have, is the businesses used to have things upstairs, where that quote homeless person would probably be spending the night there. He might do something like clean up the lot, or sweep the floor. We even have a song like that. "A man of means by no means sweep for two hours, get a place to sleep." The thing is, is the regulations and the patterns that the council has enacted, a lot of times because of public demands, has made it so commercial areas can't have places for people to live. Places like downtown, where these people used to have inexpensive places where they could sleep, a lot of times, like I said, they would do a little bit of work, and they have a place. So the council, I think, really needs to get rid of a lot of the restrictions. We had a commercial area that I noticed that the city was approving. And there was like, no provision for any sort of place where people could live around that. It's like, why the separation? And that is why so much of our housing, so much of our, we have homeless, and it's a responsibility that I think this new council should really look at and get rid of, first, get rid of the restrictions, and then set policies so even the lesser of us among us can not get beautiful, paid-for things, but there's things that, even if you're kind of sick, you have problems, you can do something that you can get sheltered for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Lance?
Lance Wicker, 1750 Collier Street, Longmont, Colorado. I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor and Council, for the land of acknowledgement today that you were given. Thank you for that very much. I think that City Council and the mayor should acknowledge it more often. So again, just a real thank you for that. And that'll be it.
Thank you, Lance. City manager remarks?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
City attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor McCoy?
Oh, that's me.
No, Councilor Idago Fairing.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to update the council and the public on how some of the Broncos money, or the stadium dollars, were spent today in our Indian Peaks Elementary kiddos received, we had an, an assembly with the Shakespeare Festival, and they came in and actually did a rendition of Comedy of Errors, as well as tied it into a social-emotional, kind of just social interaction in conflict resolution. And so I learned that as they were presenting, and it was a great presentation, by the way, and the kids were really excited, they've, I think we only had like one or two kids in the whole school that have actually seen anything Shakespeare-ish-like, or any kind of play. So this was a really unique and special experience for them. Afterwards, I learned that the money that the youth council had actually, you know, when they were awarding dollars to different nonprofits, that was one of the, the groups that received that money. And so they're, they're getting out to, I know that they were prioritizing our Title One schools to, to give this experience to them. And we were able to, to do a culminating activity afterwards around conflict resolution, and it was, it was a really positive and exciting experience. So I would love to see more of what the nonprofits are doing, who've received money from the stadium dollars, and how they're, they're incorporating that into our community. But it was, it was great to see it firsthand.
Councilor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just want to welcome Ward One, City Councilwoman Diane Chris to City Council, and I look forward to working with you.
Councilor Yarborough?
Ditto to that. I just, speaking of nonprofits, I wanted to remind everybody, I wish I could have said this when we had more people in the room, that today is Colorado Gives Day. You know, $50, $25 to nonprofits who are helping those people, providing services for those who are not able to provide for themselves. And so services like the nonprofit that went out to the school, that, and provided those opportunities for kids that they would not have normally, maybe normally not have been exposed to. So just remember that Colorado Gives Day is just a little bit of money, or a lot of money, to, to the nonprofit that you are passionate about, and so that we can keep that money going out into the community. So I just wanted to remind us about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to welcome Diane Chris as well as our new councilperson. I look forward to working with her and the rest of the council. It's going to be a really good 2024. So, thank you, everybody, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Been moved by Councilor McCoy, seconded by Councilor Martin. All those in favor? I, we are adjourned, that carried unanimously.